For Monday, March 26, 2018, I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing, "Oh, Canada."
(Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you to an alumni member of our Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio and to the National Film Board for the images of our country. I would look for a motion for the adoption of the Monday, March 12 minutes. Can I get a motion to adopt that set of minutes, please? Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'd move that council approve the minutes of the city council meeting held Monday, March 12, 2018, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Are there any errors or omissions that we need to correct before we adopt them? I don't see anybody ringing in, so they must be good, so I'll call for the vote to adopt that set of minutes. You can still vote. Sorry, there was a question of you don't have to be in attendance to vote on them. Thank you. Thank you. That motion carries. I'll look for a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Counselor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move the council adopt the agenda as presented.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. That brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. We have a number of delegations that let us know ahead of time that they were wishing to present, so we'll take them in the order that I have them down on my sheet. And we're going to start with a very special introduction, and I'm going to turn to our Infrastructure and Protective Services Director for the introduction of the city's new fire chief, Dr. Galante.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. As you are aware, a few months ago, our former fire chief, Dan Lemieux, decided to take on a different opportunity. So the city initiated a recruitment process that finalized by the end of the year with the selection of Mr. Preben Bosson as our new fire chief. So I would like to take this opportunity to introduce Preben Bosson as the new fire chief for the city of Grand Prairie. Preben was born and raised on a small farm in Denmark. After high school, he decided to explore the world and sign up for a farm exchange program to Canada. The experience from the exchange program was so great that he moved to the region on a permanent basis in 1981. Preben shares his life with wife Lori, their three adult children, and one grandson. Soccer was always a big part of his life growing up, and he continued to play in Grand Prairie. His children also played, and Preben often coached their teams and traveled with them to tournaments and provincials. Preben started his career with the Grand Prairie Fire Department as a volunteer firefighter. In 1984, he moved to a full-time firefighter and progressed to first-class firefighter in 1987. In 2001, Preben was promoted to lieutenant, and in 2005, he was promoted to captain. In 2012, he was successful in obtaining the position of platoon chief, gaining additional management experience in that role. In May 2015, Preben took on the role as deputy fire chief operations. Firefighting has certainly changed over the years. When Preben started his career with the Grand Prairie Fire Department, there were four or five firefighters on duty per shift. Big fires meant waiting for off-duty firefighters to return to the station. Back then, it was kind of an unwritten rule that if you were paged, you had better go because your coworkers depended on you. Today, the Grand Prairie Fire Department staffs three stations with 13 to 17 firefighters per shift, and we still call in off-duty staff to assist on the major calls, but we now have immediate backup from the other two stations. Call volume has also increased. Last year, the Grand Prairie Fire Department responded to over 5,000 emergency calls in the city, and in 1983, the department probably had about 300 calls per year. In December last year, Preben was selected as the new fire chief of the city of Grand Prairie. When asked what he enjoys most about his work with the city and the fire department, he said, "The people who work here. We have the most amazing staff who will go to any extent to help. It is truly amazing to be part of. Please join me in welcoming Preben as our new fire chief." Thank you.
Welcome, Chief Bosson.
Thank you. Very brief. First of all, I'd like to thank Horacio for the introduction and like to thank the council for this opportunity. I'm very honored to be in this position as fire chief. It was not a vision I had 34 years ago when I started for this department. I was just simply looking for a better job back then, but now it seems like a very natural next step. I have many people to thank for my success. I'll name a few, but there are many others. First of all, I'd like to recognize my family, my wife Lori and daughter Jill here tonight. Appreciate all their support over the span of my career. I'd like to recognize all the staff at the city of Grand Prairie Fire Department, as Horacio alluded to. Special recognition to Deputy Chief Saustat, she's in attendance as well to show her support. She's been very supportive over the past three years or better while I was the deputy chief of operations, and she's been extremely supportive in the transition into the chief position as well. So a big thank you to Deputy Chief Saustat. I'd also like to recognize former chief Lemieux. He left me some pretty big shoes to fill. He was and still is a great mentor of mine. I'd also like to introduce and recognize the three chiefs from the county. Chief Grant, Deputy Chief Verdon, and Deputy Chief Johnson. We work as closely as we can, and we recognize each other for the strength we share, and it should be noted that Deputy Chief Johnson worked for the city for 36 years, and I worked with him for at least 34 of those years, so a very long and strong bond. And finally, I'd like to thank the city of Grand Prairie. Truly is a great place to work, and it is a great community to live in and raise a family. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Chief Bosson. Welcome again. Now, we expect everybody else that comes forward to have a speech as well-prepared as Chief Bosson. Thanks very much, Chief Bosson. Next, we'll call up Mika DeGroot with Spinal Cord Injury Alberta to speak about the 2018 Chair Leaders Enabling Access event. Mika.
Thank you.
And just make sure that one of the mics is a little bit towards your...
It has to be over here. Okay. Is that better? All right. And I haven't spoken to anybody yet about how to use this machine. So let me... How do we get going?
There you go.
Okay, so... Thank you. So I'd like to say thank you to everybody. Normally, my presentation regarding chair leaders goes like this. You know who I am, you know what I do, you know what is happening, and I hope to see you there. Today, I thought you deserved a little bit more than that, so I'd like to just talk to you a little bit more about what does Spinal Cord Injury Alberta do, a little bit of our history, and I really need to say thank you with every slide, but that would just get boring. So this is kind of where we're going to begin. As you can tell, I'm already nervous. Okay, so prior to World War II, people who sustained spinal cord injuries in combat generally did not survive. In 1945, when the veterans came back to Canada, they said, "Oh, my goodness, you mean I have to live in a long-term care center for the rest of my life? I really don't want to do this." So they grouped together, and they formed the Canadian Paraplegic Association. We changed our name back in 2014 because we were getting calls from people who had had injuries in their neck, saying, "Well, will you help us? You're only talking about paraplegics." And we said, "For sure, we're going to help you, and not only that, we're going to step up our game a little bit." And somewhere around 2003, in Alberta, we decided that we should be providing services to people who have disabilities that are caused by other reasons than spinal cord injuries. So about 50% of the people that I work with today have other reasons to have a physical disability. It's very interesting work. I'm very passionate about it. I've only been doing this job now, maybe not the job, but I've been in the field now for well over 45 years, and I haven't gotten tired of it yet. Unfortunately, we are looking that by about 2030, the number of Canadians living with spinal cord injuries alone is going to climb well over 100,000 people. You might not notice somebody who has a spinal cord injury because rehabilitation has improved so dramatically that people are walking without splints anymore. Like, it's just incredible what the research is doing. Saying that, people's injuries happen throughout their lifetime, so we're helping people from childhood on. It just doesn't quit. Our vision is that Albertans with spinal cord injury and other physical disabilities will enjoy optimal physical, spiritual, economic, and emotional well-being within fully accessible and welcoming communities free of physical, attitudinal, and systemic barriers. What I like about this is we've been saying this for years, so that Grand Prairie has a welcoming and inclusive committee is pretty exciting. Our mission is to empower persons with spinal cord injuries and other disabilities to achieve independence and full community participation. And you might wonder, how in the world do they do that? Yes, our primary issue, our primary concern is client support and service coordination. That's entirely goal-oriented, from help me get to school and find funding to do that for free, to get me out of this long-term care center and get me into barrier-free housing, to my child's returning to school, and we don't know how the teachers are going to help her reintegrate. It could be anything. Community development, I'm personally involved with a number of things, including the Accessibility Advisory Committee. Currently, we have on that committee the MS Society, the MD Society, thank you, firemen, the CNIB, the city of Grand Prairie, and there are individuals who have disabilities on the committee as well. Personally, I don't think it's a big enough committee. I'd like to see more. I'm also the lead on the International Day for Persons with Disabilities, and that reaches out to anybody and everybody who has something to celebrate. So if you have the opportunity, it would be great if you could come out, and it doesn't matter who you are. I'm also on the Grand Prairie Residential Society. I've recently been asked to sit on the board for the Wolverines Wheelchair Sports Association, and I am very proud to be one of the immigrants at the local immigration advisory table. The city of Grand Prairie, community social development, and city council have been very, very important to what we do here locally, and I would love to have your help with how do we reach out to commercial and private property owners. Our peer program is very small. I am an active support to my clients that attend the Wheelchair Sports Association, which is why our board member isn't here, because he's busy doing something with them this evening. And we do have a team in the Ten Pin Bowling League for the first time this year. It seems like next year, our primary player, of course, there's four on the team, but there's one player who would rather try and be on a different team, which would be absolutely great for him to be fully integrated into the community and no longer requiring support from SCI Alberta, because that's our ultimate goal. The virtual peer connections program, that's out of Edmonton, but there are people here in Grand Prairie that are participating in that peer program, and we do match peers, so that somebody who has had an injury and needs to have a better understanding of what does reintegration into the community mean, then we try and find somebody with a similar injury or similar cause for disability. And then, if you have a question, just ask. If I don't know the answer, I'll help you find it. That's the information piece. As council members, I know that you take seriously your role as leaders of the community, and you develop policies, you provide and support programs, you provide incentives, and you refer people to appropriate agencies, and I cannot tell you thank you enough for what you do for our community. And that's why we ask you to join us at our two special events every year. The first is the International Day... Oh, I have a picture that's missing. The picture that's missing was of Mazen Asaf, who he received this year the very first-ever Inclusive Community Award, which is put together by our local community committee, and that's Cecil Pizzi. He's our local board member on the Spinal Cord Injury Alberta website, and he received the single award, the Marlin Steiner Award from the province, from the Premier's Council of Disabilities for his involvement in the community post-injury. This is happening around December 3. I'd love to see you out there. Come out if you have time during the workday. Come out and join our video and conversation cafe. We're going to have an evening event as well, but we don't know quite how it's going to work, and our local actor and radio advertiser creator, Scott Maitland, is going to be our master of ceremonies this year. So, chair leaders, what is that? Okay. So it was developed in New Brunswick. It went national in 2009, and in Grand Prairie, Mr. Given himself was our very first chair leader. And since then, at least half of our chair leaders has come from the city staff and city council members, and you are invited to join me again. You can even be a repeat. I'm looking at June or September. I haven't figured out how I'm going to find out who's going to do this, so I might be sending you an email, or you can just leave a message for me on my phone. Public is invited to do this as well. We can do this flexibly, because right now, I don't have any volunteers, so it's however we make this easy for all of us. So last year, people just came and picked up their own wheelchairs, tossed in the back of the car, and went to work, and I think that's probably the most effective again. It's a great way to find out if you can get to your office or not. The wheelchair would be provided. You can plan your own events. We can look at having a lunch or an evening event at the end of the day, and I'm hoping that somebody in the media wants to interview you. And just consider, the Rotary Club will be selling their cash and camping tickets, so it would be fantastic if you happened to be there that day, or any day in a wheelchair. So some of the people who have done this, they've always been decision-makers and policymakers, and we've had every one of the municipalities nearby, from Valley View to Beaver Lodge, Sexsmith to Grovedale, have been part of this. We've had a really great response. For two years, we've had group activities, and then it became smaller. Last year, I was pretty excited about something we've seen a million times. How many of us go to the amphitheater and watch people with scooters being lifted up to the stage? Well, last year, our student happened to be singing in a concert the same day as Chair Leaders event, so he couldn't join them on the stage. That's just a thought for you guys. I've already spoken to the guys at the park about it. I'm pretty sure they're going to do something. Representative of the public are often involved. There's Marion Manick up top. She decided to push the envelope, creative thinker that she is, and instead of using the washroom down halfway through the field house, she went to the public washroom. And that door is not big enough for the sports chair, but that's okay, because most people using that one aren't using the sports chairs. And the woman on the right is Yvonne Remple. She's in Grand Cash. And man, oh, man, when Grand Cash had their Chair Leaders event, they realized they have a long way to go, right? It was just, you know, we've just had some fantastic help. I don't know who was in that. I do, too. It was Kevin O'Toole eating lunch underneath a lamppost. Do you remember that picture? Yeah, well, that's the one that's missing. I know. And if it's not there, it's going to go show up somewhere else. Anyway, I had to chuckle because the second story that Bill told us was he couldn't get his coffee cup. And what was the first story that Bob told us? He couldn't get his coffee cup. So, you know, it's reality. We're not going to make changes unless we need to. But what I am certain of is that the city will make changes when we need to. And one change that I'm looking for or to in the future is that you'll be hiring people who have the necessary skills, who have disabilities, whether they require adapted communication or computers so that they can, because they're blind, or because they have a significant hearing loss. I'm hoping down the road that there will be people with those skill sets working with the city, and at this point, I have no reason to doubt that if somebody with the appropriate skills comes up, that they would get a job with you. These four agencies are major supports. The Swan City Rotary Club is in there not because they provide significant funding, but because they help us run our programs, and they help us meet the needs of people who otherwise would fall through the cracks because all of a sudden they're homeless or because they've been in an abusive situation and lost their equipment in the move. Sometimes people realize, "Oh, no, I didn't get in touch with H, so I don't have my money to get to Edmonton for my medical appointment. Can you loan me the bucks and I'll pay you back?" Sometimes they pay me back. Sometimes they volunteer. But with the Swan City's support, it allows us to do that, and we wouldn't be anywhere without the support of the United Way. Online, if you go to our website, you'll see several pages, several links, Facebook, Twitter, YouTube. We've got some online classes now, including WMS and some caregiver courses. There's around six or seven online that you might be interested in taking a look at. I pretty much, I'm really, really happy with what we've got on our videos. On the homepage, we have over 100 videos, and the YouTube site has many more that are updated, and these are about people who've been there, from parents who all of a sudden are in a wheelchair, or people who weren't parents until they had children after they were in a wheelchair, you know, to people getting jobs, to people paragliding, to skydiving, to... It's just incredibly fun. And on the SCI Canada Spinal Cord Injury Canadian website, you'll find a network button, which will show you who our partners are across the nation. So I really just wanted to say thank you for everything you're doing, tell you a little bit about ourselves, hope that you come out, sit in a wheelchair for the day, stop by for coffee sometime. I meet at the East Link Center. You can even call it for work. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Mr. DeGroot. Any questions for Mika? I don't see anybody ringing in. Thanks very much, Mika, for being here, and thanks for all the work that you do in the community. Next, we have Madame Michelle Marguerite to speak with respect to the Francophone and Francophile Cities Network. Madame Marguerite. Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor Given, dear councillors and members of the community, as the Regional Director of ACFA Regionale de Grand Prairie, I'm very pleased to be able to address the council today. They are exciting, very, very exciting time for the French-speaking citizen in Alberta as we are currently experiencing some very important changes, including an increasing presence of the French language in Alberta, the adoption and implementation of French policy by the government of Alberta, as well as the growing recognition of our emblems and the positive contribution we make to the wealth of the province. It is in this context of openness toward French-speaking Alberta that I wish to thank Mayor Given and the council for their moral and financial support for the work done by ACFA de Grand Prairie. This support allows us to impel common issues that are important to all of us as citizens. In 2012, the provincial ACFA board recognized the important role of Mayor Given and the council by presenting them the prestigious award of Francophonie, Amis de la Francophonie. In 2015, the city of Grand Prairie continued to demonstrate its strong commitment toward the Francophone community by becoming a member of the Réseau des Villes Francophones et Francophiles d'Amérique. Thanks to the leadership of Mayor Given and the city council, Grand Prairie will now be the host of la Conférence des Villes Francophones et Francophiles d'Amérique. This rendezvous is very important and will take place in the fall of 2018. This is the first in Alberta, and we are so proud to welcome in our city more than 100 delegates, which whom will be able to share the rich history of, the rich history and heritage of Francophon in Grand Prairie but also in Alberta. The city of Grand Prairie can count of the support of the Francophonie in Grand Prairie to give a hand to organize that rendezvous. Thank you also for being a member of the Alberta-Bengal municipality and to help us promote our city with the relocation guide in French, and it is a very great promotional tool to attract new Francophones to come, work, but especially to settle in our community. Through these commitments, we are giving Francophones in Grand Prairie and its representatives a significant visibility that is very necessary for the development of Francophone community in our area. These achievements demonstrate the importance of the strengthening and the bond that unit us to achieve great things. These close collaborative relationships have a capital importance for the development of our Francophone community. So I want to thank you for helping us to live in a beautiful Francophone community in Grand Prairie. Thank you for your attention, and long vie to Francophonie in Alberta. And I have brought my new assistant, that is a graduate from École Nouvelle Frontière, and a young man that will graduate in June from École Nouvelle Frontière, and they have a token of appreciation for councillor and mayor given. Thank you very much.
Don't leave just yet, Madame Marguerite. If you'd like to have a seat, as your assistants are handing out, what I'm going to assume is maple syrup...
It's not rum. It's not rum.
That's one of the biggest bottles of maple syrup I've ever seen, so I could be forgiven from this...
They are very special, and they come from the city of Quebec.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And while those last ones are being handed out, I'll say on behalf of this council and past councils, thank you very much for your kind words. The city of Grand Prairie has appreciated the opportunity to recognize the Francophone people in our community and their contributions that they've made in the past and that they continue to make today. But thank you very much for your support as we move forward on this journey. Thank you. Any questions for the delegation? Councillor O'Toole.
Yes, I'd just like to repeat what Mayor Given said. People like you in the community have made the French-speaking people aware of this community. And I want to thank you very much for all the hard work you've done during your paid time and your off time to make this community a success in the 7,000-plus French-speaking people in Grand Prairie. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I just want to let you know that I have a fantastic board and they work as hard as I work. And we are a very strong community in Grand Prairie. Thank you.
I see also councillor Clayton. Councillor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I know that last term administration and council made it a priority to, for a couple councillors to attend the event. I'm happy to see that it's coming to our region and we can highlight the great Francophone opportunities in Grand Prairie. I also wanted to say that although we all see how much value tourism is to our region, typically it's sport tourism. And so it's great to see a cultural piece of tourism come to Grand Prairie, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I don't see anybody else in the queue. Madame Marguerite, merci. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have one more piece of official business before I open up the delegation portion. Anybody else that came to speak to an agenda item? I have the pleasure of making an official proclamation today in support of Children's Wish Foundation of Canada and Wish Month, which takes place every March. I'd like to invite Koby to come forward. Koby is a Wish child, as my papers tell me. I'm not sure, Koby, if I would call you a child, though. So, come on up. Koby's joined here by his family, his mom, Deborah, Miles' dad, and Tegan, his sister. Koby's 16 years old. And Koby, thank you so much for joining us in recognition of the Children's Wish Foundation. I'm gonna make the little official proclamation. Then I'll give you a chance to say any words that you'd like to say about the Wish Foundation. And then we'll do that official picture bit. Okay. So, whereas in Alberta, Children's Wish is celebrating the Wish children, their families, as well as the donors, volunteers, and various stakeholders who turn wishes into reality. And whereas the Children's Wish Foundation of Canada is the largest of all Canadian wish-granting charities dedicated to granting wishes to Canadian children between the ages of three and 17 who are diagnosed with life-threatening illnesses. And whereas for more than 30 years, Children's Wish has worked tirelessly to grant heartfelt wishes to nearly 25,000 children and their families. Now, therefore, I, Bill Given, Mayor of the city of Grand Prairie, Alberta, do hereby proclaim March 2018 as Children's Wish Month. From trips to Disneyland, barrel racing, horse, to meeting Selena Gomez, Children's Wish Foundation of Canada's mandate is to never deny an eligible child the most heartfelt wish. Koby, thanks very much for coming this evening. And I would like to open the floor to you if you wanted to say anything about the Wish Foundation or tell us anything about your story. Welcome.
I would just like to say thank you for the Wish Foundation for giving so many great opportunities to so many different kids who might not be able to do certain things at different times in their lives. They give many great opportunities to do so many different things, from, like you said, the trips to Disneyland to meeting celebrities, to going to TV shows, which is, I did. It's just a great program that they have that gives so many different types of kids so many different opportunities. So I'd like to say thank you for that.
That's awesome. Thanks so much, Koby. And would you like to share with council what your wish was and why you made it?
Yes. I went to the Ellen Show in February. We had our trip down to California. We did Universal Studios. We did Santa Monica. We toured Hollywood. And the Ellen Show was a spectacular experience, which is something that many people cannot do on their own. So, again, I would just like to thank the Make-A-Wish Foundation for that opportunity.
Thanks so much. Thanks for being here. So do you wanna do that official picture bit?
Okay.
Thanks so much, Koby, for coming down and supporting the people who supported you at the Children's Wish. Certainly appreciate you being here tonight to help us recognize the good work that they do in our community and in communities across the country. So those are all the delegations that we had advanced notice of. Was there anybody else that wished to present to council on any community-related business that wasn't the subject of a public hearing? Is there anybody that wished to come forward to present to council? I see that we have a number of people with yellow logos on their shirts related to our responsible pet ownership bylaw and the issue commonly known as backyard hens. So are you here tonight just in support of third reading? Okay. Thank you very much. So this is the last opportunity. Is there anybody that wished to come forward and address council? Seeing nobody coming forward, then I'll close the delegation portion of our agenda. Thanks, everybody, for sticking it out through a lot of delegations this evening. We'll move into item number 7.1 under unfinished business. The Alberta Bilingual Municipalities Association, councillor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I would like to have council approve the motion that councillor O'Toole will be the bilingual municipal association representative. And I think that's a pretty cool honor and very fitting for you, Mr. O'Toole.
Thanks, councillor Plott. Any other discussion or debate? We'll have an opportunity to get to know the organization, councillor O'Toole. And so I hope you'll report back frequently to council and we'll get a chance to figure out how best to be involved in the organization on a regular basis. Any other discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And would take us to item 7.2, the Downtown Business Improvement Area Association 2018 Budget. Council, this is a piece of business that is required of us to make a motion to approve the 2018 Downtown Association budget. It has previously been approved by the Downtown Association members at the AGM of the association. And council was emailed, the budget makes up a portion of our agenda as well. Can I get a motion to adopt the budget? Sorry, approve. Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council approve the 2018 Downtown Business Association budget.
Thanks, councillor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries and would take us to item 7.3. This is a carryover from our last meeting where we were not able to complete the third and final reading of the proposed amendments to bylaw C1226C. Would look for a motion. Councillor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give third reading to bylaw C1226C, being an amendment to the animals and responsible pet ownership bylaw.
Okay. Thanks very much, councillor Blackburn. So open for discussion or debate if you'd like to kick it off.
If I might speak to the motion, thank you. First, I'll reiterate something that I said a couple of weeks ago. And that is that having taken the Backyard Hens 101 course, I had the opportunity to learn a lot about, not only about chickens, but about the Grand Prairie Urban Hens group. And I find them to be a very dedicated and disciplined group of people who are offering a lot of support in terms of sourcing programs and mentorship to people who may have an interest in having hens in their backyard. They've also been able to provide a lot of information to us that counters many of the concerns and conceptions that people have about what urban chickens might be all about. And so, given the fact that these folks have done their homework, including their homework of checking with their neighbors before coming to us and saying, hey, I really want to have chickens in my backyard, I do believe that we would be doing these folks a disservice if we were to put a ban across the city for this opportunity when each applicant has the opportunity to, or gives the opportunity to their neighbors to make comments or let their concerns be known through a notification process. And so I think that it would be important for us to not stand in the way of individuals and their neighbors getting together and doing something that appears to be quite worthwhile for those people that are interested in it. The one thing I'll say further about it is that one of the concerns that I've heard is that, you know, having chickens in a neighbor's backyard might be something that would take down the value of my property. I think that those people who are going to be given the opportunity to provide notification or response to a notification when an application is made would be taking that into consideration along with everything else. And if they're prepared to go for it, then I think that we should not be standing in their way.
Thanks, councillor Blackburn. I see councillor Bressi in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll be voting in support of this. And once again, it comes down to property rights for me. It makes no sense that we limit people's property rights to keep four hens and enclosed coop on their yard when we're not limiting people's rights to have a dog or to have a cat with way less restrictions on the yard. I don't want to get into too much about what I said last council meeting, but one interesting conversation I have had since our last council meeting, so I had the opportunity to chat with Mayor Bumstead in Dawson Creek. And he was the third elected official I've talked to about urban hens since I got elected and asked, hey, how's this going in your town? And all three of them have said that when urban hens came before them as a council, it was a very contentious issue. It created a lot of controversy. And then all three of them said after a pilot program was announced or was approved and people started keeping hens, they literally never heard about it again. So those three officials, including from one of our neighbors up here in the Peace Country, they gave me great reassurance in my vote tonight.
Thanks, councillor Bressi. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Councillor Friesen.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I wasn't here two weeks ago, but I was watching the meeting from Mexico. And so I am somewhat up to speed. I'll tell you what, I hated gathering eggs. I hated the chickens when I was a kid. I would so rather slop the pigs and shovel out the trough behind the cows after they left the milk barn, then go and gather eggs. I thought they, well, they were scary to me and they stunk. But that's not what we're talking about here. I've given a lot, a great deal of consideration and talked to a number of people about this, those who, actually more who are, who object to it than who are in support of it. And when I explore with them what their objections are and let them know exactly what it is that has been proposed by administration and what we're really talking about tonight, they go, oh, I didn't know that, and actually change their mind on it. And I do, I feel for those neighbors who are concerned about this. But I also heard last week that their objections were very well answered by a lot of duly diligent study by the group that has been working on this. And I appreciate that a great deal. So I will be supporting this motion tonight.
Thanks for those comments. Councillor Friesen, councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. My opinion hasn't changed. I will not be supporting this. And it's not my opinion, it's the people that I have talked to, the majority of the people that I have contacted. And my wife drives, or my wife feels that I'm driving her crazy because I talk to the person at the cashier, I talk to the person cleaning the tables, whatever. I try and get the most dynamic answers. And still, the majority of people that I've talked to are not in favor of this. And so I'm not voting necessarily on my opinion. I'm voting on the people that I've talked to. And I will not be supporting this. But I do want to just comment, I want to thank the people that are, the urban hens people for sticking it out and being very optimistic. And however this goes tonight, I want to thank you for hosting a great fight. And truly, from the bottom of my heart, there's a number of people that said they're not very happy about this. And I don't see them in attendance as much as I see you guys. So, thank you.
Councillor O'Toole. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would like to move the council direct management to issue no more than 15 livestock exemption permits for urban hens within the first year of implementation of this bylaw amendment and report back to the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee after one year of implementation. I do want to note that my motion is different than the recommendation that's made here. I hope that's in order.
Absolutely. It's your motion to make. Absolutely.
Well, and the reason I'm speaking for 15 is, in my mind, the point of a pilot program is to collect as much data as possible. I really don't think these are gonna be, cause problems in our community. I'm also willing to admit that I might be wrong about that. And so I want to collect as much data as is possible. And we heard last council meeting that we've got over 10 people who have gone through the course, who have appropriate yards, who have all their neighbors at consent. And I think that we should be enrolling all of them to see how this impacts our community so we can make a very informed decision when we revisit this in one year. So that's why I'm suggesting 15 instead of 10.
Okay. Thanks, councillor Bressi. Councillor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'm just wondering, maybe this is a question for administration or if we're gonna pick away. This is, I mean, there's a couple of things I'd like to try to see us work into the permit process, but is this permit process gonna come back later that we could discuss then? Or are we just?
Yeah, no, the permit process is fully within the realm of management. This is council essentially giving management some direction on the total number of permits available, not the process itself, which would be a different discussion. I think management has presented a recommended process. But typically, that would be something we might have discussed at the committee level when it was presented or one of the previous times. Yeah, yeah. So the recommendation isn't on the process itself, just the number of licenses available. Councillor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would like to amend the motion. In the latter part of the motion, I would like to suggest that bylaw amendment, report back to Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee within six months of implementation. And the reason for this amendment is that I appreciate the work and the preparedness that the Urban Hens Committee has done. However, I'd rather be ahead of the issues than behind it. And so for me, six months is a more realistic period of reporting from bylaw services.
Okay. Thanks, councillor Clayton. So that motion is in order. So the motion is to amend councillor Bressi's motion rather than to report back after one year, to be, to report back after six months. So discussion and debate on councillor Clayton's amendment. Councillor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a question for administration as I'm considering this amendment. Do we have an idea of about how long it might take before our first permits under this get issued? I'm trying to figure out if we're reporting back just as permits are going out, that I'm likely not in support, but if we're, if permits might be going out in the next few weeks, then I'll likely support it.
Director Glanter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So assuming that we have applications ready, looking at the crowd here. The typical processing time will be a couple of weeks, three weeks maximum. We'll need to do some checks on the background and circulation, verify the consent for neighborhood and issue the permit. So a couple of weeks to three weeks should be the typical timeline.
Thanks, councillor Bressi. Anyone else to speak on councillor Clayton's motion? I'm gonna go to councillor Thiessen. Councillor Clayton, I'll come back to you to close. Well, so I'll come back to you to close, yeah. Councillor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I won't be supporting the motion and for a simple reason is if we want to collect as much data as possible, which I'm in support of councillor Bressi's original, I guess, amendment or his motion. or his motion as stated. I think a year is an appropriate amount of time because then we'll see, I guess, the full range of maybe any issues that might come forward, how chickens deal within a coop in the outdoors in a minus 40 winter, for instance. If we do that six-month process now, we're going to miss an entire winter. We won't have any data collected with, on the impact of urban hens in the city during the wintertime. So I'm looking for a fulsome, fulsome round of data that we can maybe review at when it comes back in a year. And I just think six months is too short of a time period.
Thanks, Councillor Thieson. Councillor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll be supporting the motion and more just because, you know, although I may have voted against it, I do want to see this work. And I think the quicker we can get on data and if there is concerns in the community, the quicker we can get on that, the better. And so, that's why I'd be supporting that.
Thanks, Councillor Palat. Councillor Clayton, I see somebody else in the queue as well. So I'll go to Councillor O'Toole.
Yes, I'll be supporting this motion. I do feel that six months into it, and then at the end of the one year, we'll be doing another assessment. So I don't think there's anything wrong with the motion at all. I think it speaks in favor. So, there you go.
Thanks, Councillor O'Toole. I'll just say that I won't be supporting the amendment. I think management will be collecting the data on a regular basis from day one when they issue the permit. And ultimately, I think, I don't believe management needs to report back to us in six months. I'm confident that council can review the issue in a year. I think we've spent a significant amount of council time on this issue as it is, and I'm comfortable with a full cycle, a full annual cycle of data. And then, considering at that point whether it's something we would want to make permanent, I don't need to consider this again in six months. I would like, like an entire year's worth of data. Councillor Clayton to close? You'll just have to get your microphone.
In regards to Councillor Bressi's comment, the intent of the amendment was from implementation date. So it wasn't to be starting effectively today. It was after the licenses have been distributed. In regards to Councillor Thieson's comments, I'm fairly confident that any concerns that may come from the community are going to be after a summer season, not after a winter season. I don't, there won't be smell, there won't be as much movement, you know? And so, I don't think the winter season data is, and comments from the surrounding neighbors, et cetera, is as important as the summer season. So therefore, based on six months from implementation from the people that are very prepared currently to get into this season right away, I think is a good sort of period of time to assess the peak season that there potentially could be any issues. So, therefore, that's all I had. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Councillor Clayton. So the vote is on Councillor Clayton's amendment to see a review after six months. So that's the amendment down to six months from one year. Please vote on Councillor Clayton's amendment. Thank you. That motion does carry. So we'll move on to Councillor Bressi's motion as amended. Is there any discussion or debate on Councillor Bressi's motion as amended? I don't see anybody in the queue, so I'll call for the vote on Councillor Bressi's motion as amended. Please vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. I believe that handles all of our unfinished business. We have no items under reports, and so we'll go into committee business. Item 9.1, the Community Living Committee Meeting from Tuesday, March 13th. Councillor Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee Meeting held Tuesday, March 13th, 2018 as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thieson. Any errors or omissions in that set of minutes that we need to correct, anything that we need to change? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. A couple items coming out of that meeting. The first, actually both having to do with transportation and the bus routes. So the first one is the Rural Transportation Pilot Program, and the recommendation reads as council will direct the mayor, or I would move that council directs the mayor to prepare a letter indicating the city's support for the Provincial Rural Transportation Pilot Program. The objective, speaking to this motion of the Rural Transportation Pilot Program is to provide Albertans in rural communities access to public transportation services. The program will provide funding over two years to eligible approved pilot projects. And this program will focus on improving public transportation services between Alberta's mid-sized urban cities and its rural counterparts, and enable municipalities and counties to test new and expanded services as well as address any gaps in the transit system that are not being served by an existing provider in the rural areas.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thieson. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Thieson?
Thanks again, Mayor Given. The second bit of piece of business is Transit Service Options to Evergreen Park. And I would move that council approve a trial charter bus service to Evergreen Park on a pilot basis, and that the full cost of the service be recognized as a gift in kind. Now, the gift in kind aspect is what I'm going to talk to in this motion because it's going to happen over the time of the stomped, which would push people back and forth and give them access to that event as well. Part of the reason why we would be giving it as a gift in kind is because for charter bus services, we are not allowed to charge initial, like, I guess, single rate payer fee. So we'd either have to rent out the whole bus or consider it as a gift in kind donation, which is what the committee has decided to do as per the recommendation.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thieson. I was, I was, I wonder if it would be more reflective of the conversation if we could recognize, first off, when we're doing the pilot, which would be for the 2018 stomped. I think that was the intent that was discussed at the committee. And I wonder if we could recognize who we're doing gift in kind to? And I think, again, the intent was to really-
To go to the stomped, yeah. And I think I touched a little bit on that at the start of just speaking to the motion.
Yeah, but I wonder, would you be comfortable with including both of those in the motion? Just so there's not a, an expectation out there that the pilot was a pilot for six months, one year, two weeks?
For sure, yeah, yeah. The motion doesn't read that way, for sure. So I can add that. And as per the mayor's recommendation, I would move that council approve a trial charter bus service to Evergreen Park in June of 2018 for the stomped, and that the full cost of the service be recognized to the Grand Prairie stomped as a gift in kind.
Sure, sure. I think that clarifies what we discussed at the committee. That's great. Any discussion or debate on the motion? I don't see anybody ringing in. I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Thieson, anything else that you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
Yeah, I'll touch on a couple of things. We had, we'd sent back a policy 621, the naming of city assets, to just be tweaked by administration to come back towards committee. We also had discussions on a dedicated facility to pickleball and a report on the Dave Bar Arena tennis courts and their condition. Administration had detailed to us the process by which they were already moving forward with the pickleball group. They did a bit of an economic analysis. It wasn't a big impact. But the most important things is, I guess, to speak to this is that the process is continuing, and we're looking at indoor and outdoor facility options. And we're just checking out what might fit best with that group and if it fits best within the City of Grand Prairie's recreation plan.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thieson. I think if that handles all of our committee business there, then we move to 9.2 in the Corporate Services Committee Meeting from the same day. Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes for the Corporate Services Committee Meeting held Tuesday, March 13th, 2018 as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Any errors or omissions that we need to correct? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor O'Toole?
I've got a number of reports that I want to bring up. And first of all, I just want to give an update on the Municipal Government Act. It's been going through some changes over the last few years. And Mr. Shane Burke, Strategic Communications Manager-
Councillor O'Toole, could we, I know you have a number of actual motions-
Yeah, okay. I can do that. Thank you. We're flexible here. All right. 9.2.1, the intermunicipal collaboration framework, the ICF recommendation. As council receive this report for information.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that motion? I'd just say this completes Phase 1 of pre-work with respect to the intermunicipal collaboration frameworks. This is work that the city undertook in partnership with Horse Lake First Nation and the towns of Sexmouth and Wembley. The package is available publicly on the city's website and has been circulated to the other municipalities in the region as we look forward to moving on to Phase 2.
Yeah, I can comment a little bit as well. The final report provides fact-based gap analysis on services, tools to gauge efficiency and effectiveness, service governance options, service governance options, sorry, recommendations and potential next steps for the ICF process.
Thanks, Councillor O'Toole. Councillor Friesen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just wanted to comment that I found this to be an exceptional document. It's very innovative in how it shows our intersections and synergies and interdependencies as municipalities with those three other municipalities. So I think, well done. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Friesen. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor O'Toole?
Yeah, I've got a little bit here to talk about. 9.2.2, the Downtown Business Improvement Area, which is called the BIA, Business Tax Assessment, Bylaw 1375. The recommendation is council give first reading to Bylaw C-1375 being the Downtown Business Improvement Area, Business Tax Assessment for 2018 Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. So I will call for the vote on first reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor O'Toole?
And move that council give second reading to Bylaw C-1375.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Maybe I'll just say for the benefit of the community, this is a piece of annual business that the City of Grand Prairie has to do to support the requirements under the Municipal Government Act for having a business improvement area or the downtown association, essentially. And so, whether we like to or not, we have to do all these readings of all these bylaws. And Councillor O'Toole, I hope has a big glass of water.
I do. And this is something that we have to do yearly through the MGA. If we can't do this for a five-year span, this is something that has to come through to council every year about this time.
Thanks, Councillor O'Toole. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. Motion carries. Councillor O'Toole?
And I move that council have third reading of Bylaw C-1375 at this meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. So this is a motion to have third and final reading of Bylaw C-1375 here tonight. If this doesn't pass unanimously, then the final reading will come back at our subsequent council meeting. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading here tonight? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously, so we can have third reading. Councillor O'Toole?
I'm a little concerned. All of our crowded people have left.
They're missing the exciting stuff.
They're missing the exciting stuff. This is the, this is where the rubber hits the road here. I move that we give third reading to Bylaw C-1375 being the Downtown Business Improvement Area, Business Tax Assessment Bylaw for 2018.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor O'Toole?
All right, down to Bylaw 9.2.3. This is the recommendation for the Downtown Business Improvement Area Business Tax Bylaw C-1376. I move the council give first reading to C-1376 being the Downtown Business Improvement Area Business Tax 2018 Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. No discussion or debate on first reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor O'Toole?
And if it sounds like we're repeating ourselves, this bylaw allows the city to impose a tax on businesses in the City of Grand Prairie's Downtown Business Improvement Area for 2018 in order to provide the necessary funding requirements.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole.
So I move that council give second reading to Bylaw C-1376.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor O'Toole?
And I move that council have third reading Bylaw C-1376 at this meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. A motion to have third and final reading here tonight, as with the past one. This must pass unanimously, otherwise it would come back. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Councillor O'Toole?
And I move that we give third reading to Bylaw C-1376 being the Downtown Business Improvement Area Business Tax for 2018 Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. Councillor O'Toole, are we down?
We're down, and the, some of the crowd come back. So I'm thinking we may be done some good here. I have one more set of motions to see if we can pass. I move the council give first reading to Bylaw C-1377 being the Downtown Business Improvement Area Business Tax Rate 2018 Bylaw. And this bylaw allows the city to impose a tax on businesses in the City of Grand Prairie's Downtown Business Improvement Area in order to provide the necessary funding requirement.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. No discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor O'Toole?
I move to give second reading to Bylaw C-1377.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you. Councillor O'Toole?
And I would like to have council, have, move the council have third reading of Bylaw C-1377 at this meeting.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Again, this is a motion to have third and final reading here at our meeting this evening. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading here this evening? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor O'Toole?
And I move to give third reading to Bylaw C-1377 being the Downtown Business Improvement Area Business Tax Rate for 2018 Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor O'Toole? There were some other things that you did at that committee.
Well, I think I've got more airtime than you so far at this meeting, so I don't know. I do want to make a report that we had a municipal government act update. As you know, in the last few years, there's been some changes. And Mr. Shane Burke, our Strategic Communications Manager, presented with committee with the information regarding to the city's compliance measures in support of the changes to the Municipal Government Act. The changes will provide the opportunity to refresh the city's bylaws and management as developed a tracking system to ensure all measures are completed or considered for implementation. So that was a pretty fun-filled afternoon. Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome. Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. We'll move on to item 9.3, the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee Meeting. Councillor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council adopt the minutes of the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee Meeting held Tuesday, March 20th as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Are there any errors or omissions that we need to correct? Seeing no one ringing in, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council award tender T-01-552-18 to Wapiti gravel suppliers for the amount of $3,125,091 with 74 cents, inclusive of GST as the lowest qualified bidder meeting city specifications. And speaking to the motion, this is, for the public's information, this is Phase 1 of the 2018 Road and Rehabilitation Overlay Project. It's an annual project responsible for upgrading and the preservation of the city's road networks. It's not quite- For upgrading and the preservation of the city's road networks. It's, uh, uh, not quite half of the annual amount spent, uh, but it's a good start, so, um. I encourage council to support this tender so we can get to work. Thanks.
Thanks, Council Clayton. Council Thieson.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I believe that Council Clayton, uh, she said inclusive, but I think, uh, in light of the public record, uh, she meant exclusive of GST.
I don't know if I did. I, I'm reading exclusive, but I may have.
It happened.
I think you might've said inclusive.
Okay.
It happens. It's totally a mistake, but just so the record shows, uh, it was a mistake.
Absolutely.
Thanks for pointing out the mistake, Council.
We are inclusive of each other's mistakes. We wanna make sure, yeah.
Absolutely.
Thanks. Thanks very much, though, uh, as a municipality city, uh, city doesn't pay GST and so important to get that right, of course. Uh, is there any other discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote.
It's okay, I'll get you later.
That motion carries, Council Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council award tendered, uh, T dash zero four dash five five two dash one eight. To Rico Construction two thousand and ten limited for the amount of seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven and zero cents. Not including exclusive of GST as the lowest qualified bidder meeting city specifications. Me, uh, and speaking to this motion, this is also another annual program. It, uh, it's part of the annual program where the city completes repairs to storm line infrastructure throughout the city. Based on the results of the previous year's, uh, assessment.
Thanks very much, Council Clayton. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Councilor Friesen.
I hate to, I hate to do this to you, um, Councilor Clayton, but you said zero cents. It's.
Zero seven cents. Thank you.
It's mad.
You did.
Okay. Thanks very much.
I tell ya. They're just mad because I get to spend more money than they do.
Is there any discussion or debate with respect to the co, the, the intent of the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, Council Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd move the council award tender, uh, T dash zero three dash five five two dash one eight. The downtown rehabilitation phase three construction, uh, which takes place between a hundredth Ave. Between a hundred and First Street and a hundredth Street to Wapiti gravel suppliers, a division of MPA. Limited in the amount of twelve million, fifteen thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-eight cents. Exclusive of GST as the lowest qualified bidder meeting city specifications. And speaking to this motion, the scope of work includes deep utility replacement, urban roadways, sidewalks, uh, walkways, curb and gutter. And streetscape elements such as landscaping, uh, city fiber conduit and other special features. This, as council knows, has been a long, um, discussion and process. Uh, a, a point of interest for those, uh, who might be watching. This does not include the support of Aqua Terra, our, um, utilities, uh, company. And so therefore, uh, is under budget as was initially set out by council. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Council Clayton. Councilor Blackburn.
Well, Councilor Clayton, I hope you're not feeling persecuted by those people on this side of the table. But did you mean a hundred and Second Street rather than a hundredth Street?
Hundredth Ave and a hun, no, it's, no, I didn't. So it's a hundredth Ave between a hundred and First Street and a hundredth Street.
Isn't it a hundred and Second Street and a hundredth Street?
A hundred and Second Street and a hundredth Street.
Thank you.
As it's noted in the document.
Yep. Thank, thanks very much, Councilor, uh, Blackburn and Councilor Clayton. Yes, a hundredth Avenue between a hundred and Second Street and a hundredth Street. Um, thank you. Any other discussion or debate on the motion? Uh, Council Thieson.
I'd just like to, uh, uh, just throw out, uh, some, some mad compliments to all of our administration. And to the people who have worked hard to put together this, this bid package. Uh, this council challenged our administration to find the best deal for our city taxpayers and they have done so. Uh, in between negotiating with Aqua Terra and putting together the right bid package and the tender. So thank you for all your hard work and the efforts that are, will be ongoing, uh, especially in, in regards to the communication program, which is also gonna be moving forward. And I have extreme confidence in it. Saying all that, I'm, I'm still not gonna support the motion, but only for a matter of pure principle. Uh, where I stand and stood, uh, years ago is still where I stand on this. And I'm not gonna say anything further to that because I was taught if you don't have anything nice to say, don't say it at all. So I'm only saying nice things today and I don't know.
Thanks very much, Council Thieson. Councilor Friesen.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So I happened to be downtown having a coffee meeting this morning. And, uh, as I was sitting looking out, I happened to be looking toward the street and Monte Hoyer was walking past, uh, beating the pavement for this. He is our communications guy and I just think it's wonderful that we have him out there and, uh, to see him there at work. He stopped in to say hello to the table that I was with and that was really good to see. So, uh, I will support this motion. I, I'm looking forward to downtown becoming what it will be.
Thanks very much, Council Friesen. Councilor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, just speaking to close this motion, um, although last.
Actually, no, there's Council Bressi's.
Sorry, go ahead.
Sure. Council Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I also think it's worth noting, I'm glad that we're voting us when, on this final approval when we are. In light of the provincial budget that came out, that's something I was keeping my eyes on very closely as we were pondering this. And we're not gonna see any change in our municipal sustainability initiative funds it's looking like right now. And so we're gonna have infrastructure funding we were anticipating for the province for other projects and that gives me comfort in doing this. I didn't know what I was gonna do if we saw that funding, funding cut, so I'm thankful for the timing of us voting on this and I'll be voting to support.
Thanks, Council Bressi. Councilor Clayton to close.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, in closing on this motion, although last term I, uh, did not support this project. I think that, uh, uh, in support of this motion, uh, for this term, we've started a great, uh, project. We need to complete this project and going forward, uh, being under budget is a huge, uh, added value piece, in my opinion. So I look forward to this, uh, continue project to be completed this year and what it will do for downtown going forward. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Council Clayton. I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Thank you very much. Council Clayton, anything else you wanted to highlight from your set of minutes there?
No, thank you, Mayor Given. That is all this. Oh, actually, I did mention it last time, but I will, um, just briefly touch on it this time. The regional director, uh, Ryan Conawalick from Alberta Transportation came to committee, provided an update on Highway forty-three X as well as. Sort of a status update on Highway forty-three. There was some good information there, maybe not as much, uh, positive information as council had hoped in regards to the progress on Highway forty. At this point, they're expecting, um, s, the scope of work for the bridge to come back within the next year, the specifications and the costing of that. However, this, uh, item continues to remain unfunded on the provincial government's budget. And as we all know, is a huge priority for the region. So, uh, we appreciated the update, uh, at that committee meeting and look forward to continual conversations with Alberta Transportation. Regards to how much of a priority Highway forty is for this region. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks very much, Council Clayton. Uh, I think that handles all of our committee business. And we have no items of correspondence this evening, uh, and so we did have a number of delegations. And so I would look for some motions to receive those, uh, for information. And I guess we would start with, uh, the presentation of Fire Chief Prevenn Bossen. If we could receive, uh, the Infrastructure and Protective Services, uh, Director's presentation for information, Council Thieson.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much, Council Thieson. Uh, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Uh, then we had a presentation from Mr. Groot, uh, from Spinal Cord Injury Alberta. We have a motion to receive that for information, Councilor Blackburn.
So moved.
Thanks very much, Councilor Blackburn. Uh, please vote. Thank you. Uh, the next was, uh, from Michelle Marguerite, uh, from the ACFA with respect to Frankford and Frankfowl Cities. Councilor O'Toole.
I'll make that motion to accept it.
Okay, thanks very much, Council O'Toole. Um, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And then, uh, the final, um, uh, presentation was the Children's Wish Proclamation. Since that was a proclamation, I don't think there's anything to receive for information there. I think that piece of business was handled with the presentation of the proclamation. Did I get all of the delegations? Okay. Just wanna make sure that we had them all. Then I think that concludes our delegation business. Uh, we have no notices of motion this evening. Uh, and so that would take us to council member reports. There were three that, uh, I think said that they had reports and I'll start with the Peace Library System, Councilor Thieson.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Uh, the members of the executive of the Peace Library System met on, uh, March the tenth. And then the general board meeting of all participants was on March twenty-fourth here in Grand Prairie. Both were in Grand Prairie. Uh, some of the things that we discussed, uh, is that time of year, so we were going over unaudited financial statements. And, uh, we managed to have a few, uh, extra dollars to put away into our reserves. And that was, uh, that was, uh, recommended by the executive and then moved on forward by the board, uh, at the March twenty-fourth meeting. We also received updates on our indigenous populations grant as well as a website project update, which is more of a website project delay since our tenders came in a bit high. So we are streamlined the process and we're going to look for other, other vendors, uh, to provide us that website. Uh, we also, uh, submitted our annual report to municipal affairs. Before we did that, the board, uh, reviewed it and, uh, gave their two thumbs up of approval. And that was moved forward. Uh, and our building update as well. Uh, phase one of four is completed. If you remember, the Peace Library System's received over a million dollars to renovate their building. It was the first big cash injection that we got since we built the building. So now, uh, we're fixing it up to make it look all nice and pretty. Uh, most of the roof is now done. As well as our boardroom area and we're now gonna be moving into the back supply rooms, offices and other stuff for phase two to four. Uh, finally, um, uh, we also, uh, talked about our, our reserves policy. And the board, uh, took the recommendation of the executive committee to up our, our reserves. Since Peace Library System is in a financial situation that we've never found ourselves in, where we can actually start putting money away on an annual basis. Uh, and again, this year, uh, we decided to up our reserves policy just on the, in case that something were to happen operationally that we could still. Continue to run and operate. Uh, this is something that was inconceivable about fifteen years ago for the Peace Library System, since the funding just wasn't there. But the board, uh, motioned, uh, to up our, uh, operational reserves from two hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand. Our technology reserves from a hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand and our building reserves from two hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand. Now, just because we upped the, the cap on our reserves doesn't mean that we threw it right up to the top. We still have money and it's room to grow. So the board has a plan to put thirty thousand dollars away a year into reserves over the long term. But, uh, over the last two years of additional funding, we've managed to save more due to increased grants and operational savings. I know I said finally, but I do have one more thing to mention from that meeting. Um, and we had, uh, an update on our populations, uh, grant. That's basically how the Peace Library Systems and Libraries receive money operationally is based on the populations that they serve. Uh, because the city of Grand Prairie's population declined by about five thousand, three hundred and ninety in the federal census. Uh, the net effect of this decrease, uh, meant that, uh, we received a reduction of ten thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars in system operating grants. And a reduction of fourteen thousand dollars in membership fees. In total, it's about twenty-five thousand of a re, revenue decrease of what we typically get from the province. But this year we were able to save more than double of that, so that's, uh, pretty, pretty good. And, uh, in regards to the Alberta budget, there was no cuts to funding in the library. So only the populations grant, which I was reassured them. I said that'll probably rise when we do our census upcoming in the summer. So a kuna matana that, we'll take a dip and then we'll take a rise in the next year. And that is all. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Thieson. Uh, the next was Council Bressi with Regional Emergency Management Committee. Council Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. It was great to go to my first Grand Prairie Regional Emergency Management or GPREP meeting. It was great learning about this really well-functioning regional partnership we've got. It was exciting to hear about that. Uh, at the meeting, we mostly just got caught up on what's going on with the organization right now and what some of the priorities are for two thousand and eighteen. And those include further training of, of our folks who would, who would manage the emergency coordination center during an event. It also, other parties include updating GPREP's website. And that includes both the public-facing one, but also the, especially the ones, the website that gives resources to people who man our emergency coordination center. And yeah, tr, training and preparedness is the big focus of this year, so I'm excited to learn how that goes along. At that meeting, we also got to have an update of what went on during a provincial exercise that happened where there was a simulation between our folks and, uh, folks, uh, folks of the province. Simulated a massive wildfire that came through our region. And I'm told that the performance was great. I'm told that the equipment we have was up to the task. That being said, there were just definitely some space issues and I think it was a good learning opportunity, learning. How they need to expand its surrounding offices of where, of wherever they're facility an emergency from. Councilor Blackburn, I'm sorry to say, but my understanding is during the simulated wire wildfire, your house burned down. But most of Grand Prairie was fine and Naomi and I always have a spare bedroom for you and Mary if you need it. So that, it was great to go to that meeting and then the following week, Councilor Blackburn and I got to go to a training meeting for GPREP. And it was great learning more about emergency and disaster preparedness. And a few interesting factoids that popped out to me. I didn't realize that since GPREP was founded in two thousand and eleven, it's been, its coordination center's been activated fourteen times. That includes the Sexsmith Grain Fires, that includes a gas outage in the county, that includes, uh, when the wildfires in BC were happening, we were bringing in evacuees. So it's, uh, it's service I thought we had, we had so, to someday never use, but we actually use it quite a bit over the years. So it's a great organization to have around. The other thing that was interesting to me, it doesn't really mean much, but I just thought it was interesting. We saw a list of the ten most expensive disasters in Canadian history and seven out of ten of them were Alberta disasters. So it's good that we're being well-prepared because apparently we're in disaster country.
Thanks very much, Council Bressi. And the last, uh, one that let me know ahead of time was Council Plot with a small update from South Peace Regional Archives Society. What's your plot?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Uh, just this past Saturday, the, uh, South Peace Regional Archives had their AGM for the year. Um, so they have a new board in place. They expanded the board size by a few bodies. And unfortunately, they had to, uh, put forward a budget that's in the red, so that's something that's, uh, a concern for the association. My apologies, I had notes and I forgot to bring them, but there was award recipients and my apologies for, for anybody that's watching that I, I don't have those prepared. But there was awards given out at the, the AGM, so hopefully that'll be up on the archive site and, and hopefully on the cities as well.
Thanks very much, Council Plot. Were there any other, uh, reports from external agencies, boards or commissions? I'll just provide a short one, uh, on the Alberta Urban Municipalities Association, the AUMA. Uh, over the last couple of weeks, I think since our last council meeting, I've attended, uh, the leaders symposium, uh, along with Council Clayton as well. Uh, as, and a joint operating committee between the AUMA, uh, board and the, what used to be the AAMDNC. Now the RMA, the Rural Municipalities Association or Rural Municipalities of Alberta. The two boards, uh, for a number of years have had a joint operating agreement. Um, and myself and Marianne Chichuk, uh, the mayor from White Court are the AUMA representatives on that joint operating committee. And so we had a chance to meet with representatives from, uh, the rural association board. We talked about, um, developing similar positions with respect to, uh, revenue sharing for cannabis. Uh, as well as, um, some other opportunities to work together on, um, uh, issues of mutual interest for the two organizations. And then I also, uh, attended a municipal governance committee meeting, uh, which is one of the standing committees of AUMA that I'm on. Uh, that was last Friday, um, down in Edmonton. And, uh, the, one of the items of interest that council, uh, might like to know about is that the committee was discussing. Which tools we may work together with, um, the RMA, the Rural Municipalities Association to develop next. Uh, the two associations have received some grants from the province, uh, to develop some change management tools to assist municipalities. Uh, and so there's a, a range of different options of things that we couldn't look at. So the committee discussed that and provided some recommendations to the board that will be reviewed at the next board meeting. Um, and the committee also, uh, discussed obviously the impact of the provincial budget. Um, I think was significantly better than, uh, many of us were thinking. Having said that, it needs to be noted, uh, that the actual twenty eighteen numbers, uh, and twenty nineteen numbers will have decreased. Uh, but the province essentially made us whole by pushing down a significant amount of funding in their prior calendar year. And, uh, that's all well and good in terms of the amount of work that we'll be able to do over the course of, you know, the, the next couple of years. Uh, we haven't lost any money per se. But my one concern would be in this, I think, um, that council may want to think about is whether or not that may be setting the new, uh, ceiling for the maximum grant. Just, and maybe I'm getting a bit cynical, um, but you know, the city of Grand Prairie is receiving about fifteen or sixteen million dollars per year. Um, I think the new number is something like ten million dollars or six million dollars per year. And with the program expiring, the province is committed to, um, developing a legislated, uh, share of provincial revenue that would. has committed to developing a legislated share of provincial revenue that would be enacted and would go to municipalities, which would be great, would actually make it more difficult to change, and would be potentially more consistent or more predictable than this sort of up-down from year to year that we get with provincial grant. My concern is if now, two years on, they say, well, your annual grant amount was only six million dollars, when today we sort of expect it to be fifteen million, we just need to be aware of that and ensure that we don't allow that new number to become the new normal. So that's something that the AUMA Board and Municipalities across the province will be looking at, I'm sure. But that's all I had to present for the AUMA. Councilor O'Toole, was there something else that you wanted to update us on?
I just wanted to ask you a question with the AUM, or AAMDNC. The city was a member with the new transition of the name. Are we still a member of that?
Yes, I believe so. I think the name, I, I think the name was a surprise to all of their members as well, and so I didn't see them going around working to sign everybody up. I think it was just a change in their branding. I don't think it's changed anything material for us as an associate member.
So they're still gonna meet twice a year, I take it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
I think they just want to make it easier for everybody to say, rather than trying to say AAMDNC, it's just the RMA now. Any other updates from our external agencies, boards, and commissions? Seeing none, then I'll start with Councilor Bressi for Councilor Roundtable.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Given. I was excited to attend the Rising Above Banquet, where I saw Councilor Thiessen and Mayor Given there, and my apologies if there was somebody else there that I'm forgetting, but it was really great to see this awesome organization that does great work with people who are dealing with cycles of defeat in our community. Looking for a place, a place to live for, for community and for some counseling services. I love the story of this organization is they lost all of their provincial funding a few years ago and thought they were gonna be closing their doors, and then our community stepped up in huge ways and made sure through philanthropy that they were funded and they could keep their programs going. It's also an exciting partnership we have with them, where we lease the Young Offenders Centre to them for a dollar a year, and that's something we're committed to for another num, for a large number of years in the future. We're also currently giving them a fifty-thousand-dollar-a-year utilities grant, which our council will get the chance to say, do we want to continue that or not? And I hope, I hope we do. I, I really do believe in housing first, and in that methodology for taking care of some of the problems in our community, but I think the first word often gets lost in that, and sometimes programs are housing-only, and I'd love to see a program that really, that isn't just going housing-first, that's thinking the long-term, how to keep people who are healthy, how to keep them healthy, and how to keep them functioning. So I'm looking forward to future partnerships we'll have with Rising Above and other organizations like it.
Thanks, Councilor Bressi. Councilor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I did a number of things this last two weeks. I just wanna touch on a couple. I did the tour of the Centre of Creative Arts, and I actually brought some of my family members. I got a phone call from the Candice Hook, the Executive Director over there, and she put me through a tour. And something that I had no idea of the number of people going through there, she said her numbers are eight thousand individual people coming through there every year. So not one person signing up for six courses, it's eight thousand people signing up for courses and seminars and stuff like that. So it's remarkable, considering you look at the building, it doesn't look like there's much going on in there. But while we were there, there was a seniors group in there doing some painting and sketching, and they've been together for over four years together. And it's their regular thing. Also, I, we, I did attend the Combatant Sports Commission event out at Evergreen Park, and I'll have a detailed report with that after we meet as a group again. So with that, thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. Councilor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. As you already mentioned, I attended the Spring AUMA Session. It was a good opportunity to get in front of ministers and hear updates from them, as well as have discussions with other municipalities in regards to urban issues that they're currently dealing with. As well as I attended the, on March thirteenth, the GPRC President's Award Luncheon. Congratulations to the winners this year. Especially, I wanted to congratulate Doug Morris, who I had the opportunity to sit on the Board of Governors with and, and from the day he walked through the door to support the college till now. He still continues to support the college, whether it's through sports, athletics, or his time serving on the Board of Governors, so congratulations to him. As well, I attended with Councilor Plot the Economic Developers Alberta Conference. It was a good discussion on many sort of topics, including rebranding. There was a session there on, on what Lethbridge did to rebrand their municipality, as well as Indigenous opportunities and other opportunities throughout our province. Although the minister was unable to attend because it was Budget Day, there was a great speaker in what Canada is doing in regards to the trade agreement. So it was a really good speaker. It was a really good opportunity to, to have discussions on many urban and rural opportunities in regards to economic development. So once again, I really enjoyed that conference. And other than that, that's it. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Councilor Clayton. Councilor Friesen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So I have mostly been away, but if you will indulge me, I'm gonna go back to something that I attended prior to leaving, and that was on March third, the Tiny Hands of Hope fundraiser. And I think I'm mentioning this because I think I was the only councillor there, but it bears mentioning because they are actually raising funds for the Garden of Light, which is a memorial playground that they'll be building in our city, and I just think that's a beautiful idea to really bring life into loss, so I was pleased to attend.
Thanks very much, Councilor Friesen. Councilor Plot?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I guess I have two that are for, for different reasons. The South Peace Regional Archives was interesting for me. I got to bring my nine-year-old daughter to an AGM, so I thought I need to have a kid come in, go through the whole process and try to understand what it was, and, and ask questions. It was kind of interesting to go home and almost get the Robert Rules book out and other things. But the other, the other big event for me was the EDA that I attended with, with Councilor Clayton. We had a couple of city administrative staff there as well. Good conference, as, as Councilor Clayton mentioned, there was some good breakouts, but a couple of things that come out of the meeting was some interesting conversation about CN Rail contact or conversation, which could be good for us with our transportation plan, as we had some discussion around that. Strathcona not having business fees, which I thought was interesting as well, and, and sorry, small business fees, I guess, was interesting about that, and a little bit of chat with them about priority-based budgeting. And, and there was a lot of county council there as well, so it was, it was nice to have some conversation with them about some regional opportunities and discussing regional things, and, and just how close we are in a lot of the conversations, which was encouraging. So yeah, overall, it was a good conference.
Thanks very much, Councilor Plot. Councilor Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll mention a couple of proclamations that I had the honor of making this, this past couple of weeks. The first one was at an organization called Probus. Probus is a relatively new club in Grand Prairie, although it's been in existence for several decades around North America and also in Great Britain. PRO stands for professional, and BUS stands for business, and the Probus Group is really, rather than being a service club, is a social club for retired and semi-retired folks, and was formed just three or four months ago here in Grand Prairie, and each month when we meet, we are welcoming new members, so we're seeing the club grow each month, and we end up with a guest speaker and the opportunity for lots of fellowship. And so we were very happy as a city to proclaim March as Probus Month in Grand Prairie. Then, just the other night, I attended, and Councilor Thiessen was there as well, speaking on behalf of the city, and I, I made a proclamation proclaiming the International Day for the Elimination of Racial Discrimination in Grand Prairie. And I was very interested to learn that this is a day that commemorates an event that happened in a small town in South Africa in nineteen sixty-two, and has been recognized since nineteen sixty-six on a, on a, an annual basis around the world regarding the, the wish for the elimination of racial discrimination everywhere. So I was very honored to be there. We had a very interesting speaker, and perhaps Chris will mention more about that. The only other thing I'll mention very briefly is that I had the opportunity to attend the Northern Mayors and Reeves Conference in Edmonton on your behalf, and I found that to be a very interesting conference. It was well-organized. There were lots of very interesting speakers on a number of topics that would be of interest to all municipalities in Alberta. And the one that was most remarkable for me was the presentation by Chairperson Anne McClellan on who's chairing the Task Force on Cannabis Legalization and Regulation for the Federal Government. And Anne spoke for ten or fifteen minutes before she inhaled the first time. She was a remarkable firecracker and had a lot to say about, about the challenges regarding the implementation of this legislation. And it gave me a lot of good insight into the reasons behind doing it, and the kinds of challenges that municipalities, municipalities should be willing to address. I was very, very, I'm thankful that I was able to go to that conference. Thank you. That's all I have for today.
Thanks very much, Councilor Blackburn. Councilor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Despite the prompt from Councilor Blackburn, I, I won't be talking about that day, although it was an honor to be, to be one of the speakers with Councilor Blackburn at the International Day for the Elimination of Racial Discrimination. One thing that I thought was really cool over the past two weeks, it seemed everywhere I went, I was running into Councilor Blackburn. I felt like changing my name to Bonnie, so that we could be like a, a well-fitting match together, besides tall guy, short guy. But there was a couple of events that I did want to touch on here. The first being, shortly after our last council meeting, I got asked to go to the GP Christian School to judge the concept designs of the South Bear Creek Pool as designed by kindergarten-to-grade-two students at the GP Christian School. So I undertook that with the principal of the school, and some of those designs were incredible and super imaginative, and former Councilor Rory Tarrant would be happy to know that one of the designs included a Tyrannosaurus slide that spit out water. Oh, Councilor Clayton, there, we're, now we're even, right? I'm sorry for correcting you earlier, 'cause now you corrected me. You're the lady. But you, you should have been there, 'cause I think you would have probably top-scored that one. I top-scored it and didn't end up being the winner, because, well, I'm a councillor and the other person was a principal, so he knows how to grade better than I do. I was just in awe of it. But good job by all the kindergartners, grade twos. I think if we had asked them to do this prior to, we might have had some pretty awesome designs for our Bear Creek Pool that'll be open this summer. I also had the privilege on March sixteenth to give greetings on behalf of the city at the Nineteenth Annual Spiritseekers Youth Aboriginal Conference and Award Ceremony. Councilor Bressi was in attendance with, with myself, and we had a very glorious time, not only getting to see the, the youth recognized for their contributions to the community, to their peers, and for their, their educational pursuits, but also for, I guess, a bit of truth and reconciliation, which was the theme of the day. And there was a lot of people in attendance that gave many, many warm-hearted speeches. One of the best was seeing Susan Bensgrove get wrapped in a big blanket for all of her contributions to the Aboriginal community, and for actually inviting spiritseekers to take part permanently at the college. I think it was like ten years ago when she asked that, so they honored her, and it was really, it was really great to be there. It seems like every time I go to those types of events, Susan's there, and she's a big supporter, so it was nice to see someone in our community get recognized in such an honorable way. And that's all I'm gonna talk about today. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Councilor Thiessen. I'll just highlight a couple of events that haven't already previously been mentioned. It was an honor to be able to bring greetings on behalf of my council colleagues at the Annual Convention for QP, the Canadian Union of Public Employees. It was the first time, to my knowledge, that they've hosted their provincial convention here in Grand Prairie, and so it was great to go down and stand beside our QP local president as he welcomed them to Grand Prairie, and basically did a sell job on how great Grand Prairie was. And, but it was well, great to recognize the delegates from across the province, who, back in their home communities, do the same work that our QP members do here to keep our city running day in and day out. I also had an opportunity to attend a meet and greet with Premier Naughtley when she was here. This was hosted by the Chamber of Commerce, where she spoke about her government's sport for pipelines, and she also took time to meet with the attendees who were there, a number of them from industry, but also from some of our municipalities in the region. Last week, I had an opportunity, last Monday evening, I had an opportunity, since we weren't meeting, I thought, what the heck, can I find a council meeting somewhere? And so I had an opportunity to go out to Wembley Town Council and discuss some issues of mutual concern with their council. And on Wednesday the twenty-first, I had an alert Board of Directors meeting, which I attended by conference call from here at City Hall. And finally, on the twenty-second, I had the opportunity to attend as a guest speaker at the Grand Prairie Regional College Business Program Conference for the business students. It was my second opportunity to attend, certainly appreciated the, the attention of the students, appreciated being invited back, although I haven't yet made, made the keynote stage. That's okay, but certainly appreciated the opportunity to share some of my experiences from different jobs in different contexts, and how I continue to use them, some learnings in my job as mayor today. And with that, I will call our meeting adjourned. Thank you.